Name and where you're from, anybody that's going to address the council tonight. And you've got three minutes and we try to stay to that because we try to be fairly natural with that. And we went to that because it can get really to be long if there's a lot of debate about something that's a hot topic. So that's probably do that. It's not to, not to sequester anybody, so we want to make sure they have a fair chance and we want to stay really equal on that. So at this time, um, do you want to go first, young lady back there?
I see that is.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yes.
I'm Teresa Olmous. I live at four forty-one South Collier. This is somewhat of a repeat, but that's okay. I'm allowed to come, right? Okay, um, Dear Board of Alderman, I'm here again to request a change in the elevation of the street light head, the head of the light, uh, at the corner of Sims and Rollins. If you would please lower the light head to the elevation of the bottom electrical wire on that pole, it should not interfere with any trucks or equipment at that elevation. It causes much aggravation to me on my porch where I sleep in the warm weather and my campfire also, uh, between my porch and my alleys when sitting around my campfire. It's like having a car headlights shining at us. You know how much veterans a campfire setting. I would be willing to pay for another bracket of your choice and the labor to make the change. My porch is two hundred and seventy-one feet from that light source and my bed is two hundred and ninety-seven feet from that same light. I do not need light at all in my yard and porch. It's like having a giant flashlight in my face when sleeping in the bed or sitting anywhere on my porch. Please note that I have lived at this home since April of twenty twenty-three and had no problem with that lighting because it was not in operation until the last week of July twenty twenty-five. If you lower that light head, then the roof of the new home installed August of twenty twenty-five would block the light that intrudes into my yard and porch. This would solve my problem and would still allow ample light to that intersection. That light fixture shines at least two hundred and ninety-seven feet in all directions. So it overlays the, uh, the light or overlaps the light from South Allen and Sims by a hundred and sixty-seven feet. So if lowering the fixture shortens the light exposure in all directions, and I'm guessing fifty feet, I'm not a mathematician, so, then that means the light from both intersections still overlap more than a hundred feet. Please, please, please lower that fixture. That street is not a fancy area. After all, there are seven electrical wires running along it and you can't even notice the streetlights if you aren't looking for them. Of course, that's in the daytime. So it's an area where everything does not have to be uniform. As I stated last month or in my last email, I don't remember which, there are four different type of fixtures on that old street, the light fixtures. I'm also asking your reason why you will not change the height of this light head. Can you tell me that tonight? I'm assuming that you have discussed this in your closed meetings in both August and September and can answer this right now. I appreciate your time and efforts to reconsider this request concerning the lowering of the light head respectfully, Teresa Olmous.
Thank you. Uh, to answer your question, I can help with that. Uh, I, I, as far as what we've done in closed section and so forth, we haven't had any discussions at all about this lamp and the light lighting situation in closed section. I can openly and gladly tell you that. Um, what we've done is I know that, uh, it's sort of a Terry, I believe Terry, he spoke with, with, on this issue with those folks involved. Uh, so is Matt, is that correct? And you have Alder, uh, Robert Hudson, okay. In all three of those circumstances, we've listened and we've, and I have came myself. So all four of us have been involved and so as far as the mathematician stuff, I don't know what it all about. I know that, that we have a, a, a reason to make sure that that area, because the school and so forth, that area is covered with a, with a visual array of light, uh, for what are strengths going on over there. But so all that being said, we're at one, we've, at this point, we've all been, have not been inclined in any way, shape or form to, to change the light. Uh, and at this point, I'm going to turn it over to you to give a formal response based upon, uh, your input, if you could, uh, in some ways, to Wickerstone. That's what we'll do.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you so much, yes.
Council, eight twenty, Hamill Drive. The reason we're here and I have other people here that all live on Hamill Drive or, or use it. Uh, it's in bad need of repair and, uh, we're suggesting to see if we can get it overlaid next year. It's, we need your help. That's why we're here tonight to see this could, could, uh, follow through. Cause the road is falling already. It's been there for twenty to thirty years and, uh, it's just sinking. It's, uh, got cracks. It's got over a hundred cracks in it. Uh, the city has attempted to come to patch it up, but, uh, that did not work at all. Actually, it's got about twenty-two, uh, speed bumps there now. And, uh, if anybody else wanted to discuss anything on this, I'd, I'd be more than happy to talk to them about it.
Um, I will respond to the discussion we had the other day.
Yes.
Uh, we talked about, I talked to Matt to make sure what communication's going on, where we've been with you over there on that when they came in town to do the overlays and, and, and writing and fixing to get an idea on that road. That road, uh, would need to be overlaid in the future. Um, and we talked a little bit about getting the material out that we put in trying to, to satisfy the cracks that were out there, um, based upon bureaucrat and others out there.
Sure, I'm representing the forty people here.
Understand. Um, so, so that being said, um, we're at a point that we are going to, we are planning on, uh, based upon our workload, what we've got going on, uh, this fall here to come out and see about removing that.
Yes.
That's what Matt said. So we need to talk with you, communicate that, I think, to you. I hope you had, if you're not, I'm looking.
Yeah, that's one to know, yeah.
Okay, well, so I am tonight.
Right.
And, uh, that's the plan to do that. And we will do that up to the point that we're not tearing the, the, as we, as we take it out of the cracks.
Right.
As long as we don't, as long as we don't start to broaden the crack that existed that we filled, okay?
It's not gonna happen, right?
Yeah, I understand, I understand. That's the, that's the one caveat to it, right? That we have to be careful.
It's so cold, Max.
Yeah, so anyway, we're, we're planning on doing that. And as far as how it works, we now have a rotation of roads in a life cycle span here. It's a trade that we didn't have before I was here. And we started to do that and we got caught up on that. So
Right.
We'll have to look at what we have going on and what's in the life cycle and Matt and those guys keep up real close eye on that and know, know what they're working on, what roads are coming up. And at, at some point, we'll have to figure out where that road fits into that in, in, in the near future here to, to know where it's going to be so we can, uh, formally know where it's going to be in the, uh, in the work of overlay. Cause at this point, it won't be next year.
It won't be next year?
No. It will not be.
Yeah, I've been asking the last couple of years, been asking you to look into it.
Uh, I have and
I know.
And, and so I'm just, I'm telling you right now, so I
Well, I said it's just now to the point, this guy's got a hundred of cracks. And the water is coming and you know what the water does when, when it freezes, it starts deteriorating that road more.
Absolutely. I understand that. And we will keep an eye on that. We are going to talk more about it internally here and get, and I will, I will give you some information back.
Okay.
When we, when we get to that part of it and we do the cracks and we see what we do with them, okay?
We're behind you a hundred percent. We hope everybody else is too.
Yeah, well, yeah, thank you. Alright, thanks a lot, guys. Thank you.
Let's go.
That's it?
That's it? Tell these guys thank you. Thank you, number one, help us out.
You scared, you scared an entourage.
Ah, well, you said, bring some pee water.
I made it. I made it. Thanks for coming. Yeah, thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Um, we're still on open comments from the county citizens. Any comments? Okay. With that, seeing what else, um, the only comment I had was from Mr. Cooley that just left and, and he came in person to, to do that. So I, I was on the fly of anything that need to be shared tonight, uh, from county citizens. Anybody else? If not, then I'll close comments from citizens and we will now move into, uh, consent agenda. Um, we have A, B, C, D, and E, that it's Board of Alderman meeting minutes, Public Works and Chilis Committee meeting minutes, Joint Government Public Safety Committee meeting minutes, uh, the collector's report and activity reports. I would accept, uh, a consent agenda of all in motion.
So moved.
Second, I have a first and a second to, uh, to approve the consent agenda of A, B, C, D, and E. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Thank you. Um, that will move us on to accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, as you guys can, and, and, and ladies can see, we have, uh, the accounts payable of twelve hundred and fifty dollars in a total of seven hundred and sixteen thousand and seven dollars and twenty-seven cents is what I'm looking for. Motion to approve. For any questions, uh, please feel free to.
I would move that we approve for payment, uh, accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars in the amount of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, seven dollars and, uh, twenty-seven cents.
Have first and a second to approve the accounts payable of twelve hundred and fifty dollars in a total of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's proved. That moves us to seven, action, agenda, and, uh, legal, under legal, it'll be bill number two five nine three. Uh, you can touch base on that with the city by two, Tara. If there are any things to discuss about it.
Um, this is adding the developer's responsibilities to add the installation cost of electric infrastructure in new developments. Uh, we had talked about this a few years ago and it was brought to our attention that, uh, we never actually passed it. So this is being passed in the utility section. This will still go in front of cleaning and zumbing to go into the subsidy code.
Basically to, to make sure that we, we have in place what we, we, we thought we had. It's just got missed, so we're, we're fixing it now and follow up to get it confirmed through the, uh, in line with the plan zone.
Move the bill number two five nine three be given its first reading by title only.
Second. Uh, first and a second for bill number two five nine three to be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance amending Centralea City Code Section two six two two, developers' responsibilities to add installation costs of electric infrastructure to be paid for by the developer or reimbursed to the city of Centralea for the cost of such materials. I move the bill number two five nine three be given its second reading by title only.
Second. Have first and a second for bill number two five nine three be given its second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If asked a second reading, please.
An ordinance amending Centralea City Code Section two six two two, developers' responsibilities to add installation costs of electric infrastructure to be paid for by the developer or reimbursed to the city of Centralea for the cost of such materials. I move the bill number two five nine three be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. Have first and a second for bill number two five nine three be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Roll call vote, please.
Ollin Orsini?
Aye.
Ollin Hudson?
Four.
Ollin Wilkins?
Four.
Ollin Deckard?
Four.
Ollin Rogers?
Four.
Ollin Knightley?
Yeah. Bill number two five nine three passes ordinance number?
Three, two, two, three.
Thank you. That moves us to B, legal, uh, bill number two five nine four, amend chapter twenty-six dash twenty-four. Any discussion?
This is along the same lines. This is just for the water side of it.
One was electric, the others were water. To be congruent, have both those covered.
I move the bill number two five nine six, seven?
Nine four.
Nine four, excuse me, when we give it its first reading by title only?
Second. Have first and a second for bill number two five nine four be given its first, uh, reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance repealing and replacing Centralea City Code Section twenty-six dash forty-two regarding oversized mains and adding developers' responsibilities to add installation costs of water infrastructure costs to be paid for by the developer. I move the bill number two five nine four be given its second reading by title only.
Second. Uh, first and a second for bill number two, uh, two five nine four be given its second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Second reading, please.
An ordinance repealing and replacing Centralea City Code Section twenty-six dash forty-two regarding oversized mains and adding developers' responsibilities to add installation costs of water infrastructure costs to be paid for by the developer. I move the bill number two five nine four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. Uh, first and a second for bill number two five nine four be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Ollin Orsini?
Aye.
Ollin Hudson?
Four.
Ollin Wilkins?
Four.
Ollin Deckard?
Four.
Ollin Rogers?
Four.
Ollin Knightley?
Yeah. Bill number two five nine four passes. That'll be ordinance number three, two, two, four. That moves us to C, the lawyer and administrative policy. Uh, I think you all talked about that last week. Uh, any questions about that one? If not, then I would be looking for a, uh, first reading by title.
Is this gonna be difficult to enforce? I was hoping that you'd be here.
He's at his conference this week. Um, it, it is gonna take officer training, but it's very, um, it's very clear.
Yeah, and the actions that the police can take a look at and counsel enforcement for littering. So it sets out five criteria. And again, I mean, the chief took a look at this and with proper training and understanding, um, you know, police officers understand either that it still requires reasonable suspicion that a crime is occurring. Um, or in certain circumstances, individuals are obstructing, um, you know, individuals' ability to get into a private business or into their own vehicle. So again, there has to be reasonable articulatable suspicion for them to, to approach somebody underneath this particular ordinance. Does that answer your question?
Give them something to act on if there's a problem.
Yeah.
Right, and, and the chief did point out, and I can make the board aware of this, you guys will also be looking at a panhandling ordinance next month. They are adjudged under different standards by courts. So the chief had a great point about, you know, he was concerned about that, but I didn't want to conflate the two because they were looked at under different legal standards. So you guys were considering a panhandling.
That was gonna be my follow-up question, cause that was something we talked about last week.
So it, it will come for you next month, but because they're looked at differently under different legal lenses, combining them together would be not be appropriate. Although the issue that he brought up is absolutely appropriate, so we'll be bringing something to you guys next month.
Bill number is two five nine five. I move that bill number two five nine five be given its first reading by title only.
Second. Have first and a second for bill number two five nine five be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. First reading, please.
An ordinance regulating lottery and related public safety conduct in the city of Centralea, Missouri and providing for enforcement penalties and procedural safeguards. I move that bill number two five nine five be given its second reading by title only.
Second. Have first and a second for bill number two five nine five be given its second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Second reading, please.
An ordinance regulating lottery and related public safety conduct in the city of Centralea, Missouri and providing for enforcement penalties and procedural safeguards. I move that bill number two five nine five be adopted by roll call vote. Second.
Have first and a second for bill number two five nine five be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Ollin Orsini?
Aye.
Ollin Hudson?
Four.
Ollin Wilkins?
Four.
Ollin Deckard?
Four.
Ollin Rogers?
Four.
Ollin Knightley?
Yeah. Bill number two five nine five passes. That'll be ordinance number three, two, two, five. That moves us to bill number two five nine six, uh, concerning, uh, the sale of various, uh, space prices, uh, sale price. Any questions about that?
Right, now, the reason for this that was brought forward a week ago was to match the prices of the, across the street and, and to bring it in line with what we see in other communities. Do we have a shortfall in the cemetery fund that is requiring additional?
So the way that cemeteries are taken care of is through sale of plots.
Yeah.
Um, perpetual funds have pretty strict rules. I want you to use that money more. So, um, I will say the cost of mowing has definitely gone up, plus we've had lots of repairs to monuments and, um, holes throughout the graveyard that have had been, um, filled in that they've been working on. So it's, the costs keep going up, but we really haven't, I don't think it was the twenty, the last time we raised the prices.
We've, we've been challenged a little bit of keeping pace in the right time for cost increases as they come along and we have a bigger one at that time. So it probably makes sense for the community to keep an eye on these things as they go up, you know, we don't want to raise prices at the same time. We don't want to
Don't undercut?
You don't want to be compelled.
Just, we're going from three hundred to five hundred. That's an increase of two-thirds and cost of living is already high enough without raising costs to die.
I will say that like if you, if you die without like any sort of like other benefit life insurance, the government does pay this out and this amount out. So I mean, it's also matching like the federal government would pay to your family if you, all you've received was a government death benefit. If that's helpful. I know it's not, but I mean, that's funded specifically for our four plots and for internal purposes.
I remember you shared last week, Karen, that this is still well below outside of our community. This is still really low. Some of those were a thousand dollars a spot, I think you shared.
I believe that's what Beth said.
Yeah.
When's the last time we raised?
I think it, I think it was either two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one.
So?
It may have been eighteen.
I mean, we've raised similar in Lexington four times since then, so might as well raise the, the other up too.
What I'll, what I'll say about that is, yeah, we need to, we gotta keep, keep pace with the cost. We're not, we're not in business. We, we do not have a huge, uh, windfall of money that we're sitting on in the general fund whatsoever. So we have to be very, very diligent in making sure we're keeping up with what's going on with everything that's just keep, continuing to, to grow in that area. So
We keep a head on the cemetery part of the whole thing. I mean, the mowing and everything, do we kinda keep a flow on that or are we losing money?
No, we're not, we're not.
We're not losing money?
No.
Okay, but we're not making anything either.
Correct. We, we have had to pull from the general fund to fix monuments.
I move the bill number two five nine six be given its first reading by title only.
Second. Have first and a second for bill number two five nine six be given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. First reading, please.
An ordinance to amend Section six dash seven and Section six dash twenty-four versus Centralea City Code concerning the sale price of various spaces in the Centralea Cemetery and the disposition of such funds. Such funds, boy, I can't talk tonight. Uh, move the bill number two five nine six be given its second reading by title only.
Second. Have first and a second for bill number two five nine six be given its second type, uh, reading, uh, reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Second reading, please. Passes.
An ordinance to amend Section six dash seven and Section six dash twenty-four of the Centralea City Code concerning the sale price of various spaces in the Centralea Cemetery and the disposition of such funds. I move the bill number two five nine six be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. Have first and a second for bill number two five nine six be adopted by roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Ollin Orsini?
Nay.
Ollin Hudson?
Four.
Ollin Wilkins?
Four.
Ollin Deckard?
Four.
Ollin Rogers?
Four.
Ollin Knightley?
Yeah.
And just for clarification for the record, uh, the last time it was increased was two thousand thirteen, twenty-third, I'm wrong.
Bill number two five nine six passes. That'll be ordinance number three, two, two, six. Uh, that moves to E, a motion, uh, for the surplus park equipment that you all have pictures attached to.
Did the chief check out those tables to see if he wanted them or not?
I don't know that.
That would be good to know. Could we possibly table this until we determine that? Because if he does, in fact, if those tables will work for him at the shooting range, that'll save us significant amount of money and new equipment out there.
Could we pass, pass the motion with him having first opportunity to give us first right refusal?
Hell, at least.
All those.
Can we do that?
I don't know, like, maybe, maybe to, I mean, it's a motion.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we, I mean, we don't necessarily even have, have a caveat to it, like, you know, assuming that the city doesn't continue this, you know, continue to need those tables.
With, with the police department, that's first right refusal for their use at the gun range.
Definitely.
Yeah, that's what she's talking about in terms of the chief having to use those tables, those heavy duty tables for the gun range.
Yeah, I mean, we did
They're certainly solid enough.
We did talk about it last week and there was concern that they would work for sighting and rifles just because they're that mesh, for lack of a better word, grade or whatever, top. They're not a solid top, so he wasn't sure they would work.
What you do is you put down the sugar and that.
It's for him to, for him to decide.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it was a concern, but
Someone was trying to look at the state.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely. We, we got something to work, we're gonna buy it.
But he still said he wanted to look at them.
Sure, sure. So he has first, first, first chance to take them. Otherwise, they're the surplus.
Oh, no, they better be placed.
I make the motion to declare this property a surplus with the caveat that the chief has a chance to look at them before they're disposed of.
Of, of the surplus that's, that needs to be, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Have first and a second to, uh, approve the motion for the surplus equipment, uh, with the police chief having first right refusal for the tables. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Thank you. Move this to old business. Do you have any old business? Do we have any new business?
Uh, actually, old business, might wanna point out, since we're actually in session now, Republican here, that we are reaching out to consultants now for the energy issues. So to focus now.
I've got that in my report. I can talk about it.
Okay, cool.
Good. Um, new business. Um, we need to have eight is, uh, discussion, uh, on the November meetings, um, because we have people gonna be gone for the general meeting that we, we were considering maybe having both meetings the same night.
Yes, for the committee meetings, both Harold and I will be out of town. So we would like to consider moving that to the same night as Alderman meeting on the seventeenth.
We can do a marathon. That's fine, buddy.
That's what that would be, so I would
Anything that has may arise on here. So do we do a motion on that now or later?
You guys can do it right now. I mean, it's already posted. So you guys can take a vote where it's actually listed on the
So moved.
Second.
Have first and a second to move the November, um,
Committee meeting.
Committee meetings to the, um, regular, the seventeenth, the regular, you know, with that, same night, right, seventeen. Here we go, got it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Just clarify, keeping the same time, six thirty.
Yes.
Same bad time, same battery.
Um, it's gonna, it adds being real size to, to roll the road.
Okay, so Matt Rush has approached me to see if the board would be interested in adding, um, Stephen has signed since that back road, um, going to the burn site or the, the brush pile, um, is now paved. Um, we may have some problems with people staying back there, plus we have a lot of people using the brush pit. So, um, I'm opening, you've been out there, we've got quite the, uh, the pile now. Um, so especially with that intersection being a little wonky. I know that the, um, Special Road District is approaching the county to check and see about stop signs. So we may be having a conversation next month for our part in putting some stop signs up on, on our side. But, um, that section there before, um, we're thinking about adding stop signs if you guys would be interested in, in doing that, so I can get that ordinance put together.
Yeah.
For that.
But yeah, speed limit signs out there, definitely.
Yeah, I see.
Do we wanna, I mean, do you wanna do like the stop signs and that or what?
Hmm?
The stop signs and that, just put that together for both stop signs and
Yeah, if they, if they approach us and wanna do it, then I can put it all in one.
That's what I'm saying, we could do it at one time.
Well, you can do a three-way stop or what?
I think that's what they're considering. I think, um, we had a resident out there, uh, he saw someone almost get hit. So I don't, that's always been paved there, so nothing's really changed at that intersection, but, um,
Now, what is the speed limit there at this point? Because if it's not posted, in theory, it would be the, the, you know, city's speed limit.
Whatever your car run, I think.
One time, all night.
The speed The, the signs coming in town is if it's not posted, anywhere, then it's twenty-five.
Yeah.
So we, you guys can decide on the speed. If you don't want it to be twenty-five.
It'd be better if it's posted, make it, just like all the others.
Yeah, I think it's
If the others are twenty-five, it'll be twenty-five.
It's, it's a narrow road with a wonky intersection, twenty-five is plenty.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
If we're gonna update the speed limit ordinance, shall we fix the one on Jefferson where it still says it drops to twenty right by the library? And then it goes up to twenty-five?
Before the school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I thought it was supposed, they dropped it to twenty because
No, I had it from twenty to that last one, I bet you did.
You brought it up a while back, Harold, but yeah, it, it's, it does. It drops to twenty, then it goes to twenty-five and with flashing. So it's supposed to drop, it drops to twenty before the twenty-five are flashing or something like that.
Right by the library.
Yeah, so it drops before the library. So before the school's on, I mean, if we're gonna update Yeah. So it drops before the library. So before the school's done. So if we're gonna update that ordinance, then should we update that? So at least we're consistent as we come down the road.
Okay.
So vice versa, you just need to block the two sides.
There's one sign that probably just needs to be pulled out, but we probably will be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be annoying.
Not really supposed to know until you get to where it changes.
Yeah. Unless there's a reason for it to be there. It does seem odd.
Okay. The only thing to think of is pedestrian traffic going to and from. But if it's twenty-five with the school flashing the light, then yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be, it would be more consistent than that, I'm sure. It's always been crazy.
We can make it fifteen all the way through. Okay.
That might be excessive.
Only if you want to see the torches and pitchforks.
So you'll put that together for us?
Yep.
For the next meetings. And that moves us to nine, City Administrator.
Great. So we've talked a lot about what's been going on. I know Matthew updated you guys on a lot of things that, um, we've been doing. Um, one big one was we did meet with, you know, the energy consultant that, um, Matthew and Clayton met with down at NPUA. They work with a couple of the other cities that are in our, um, agreement. Um, it was a very good conversation. We are going to be looking at possibly contracting with him. I'm gonna send the contract out to city for to, to look at and, um, see what we can do as options for, what is best for Centralea. So look for that coming in the, in the near future. Um, I am leaving Friday morning. I'll be gone until following Friday. I'm going to the international conference for city managers. I'm very excited about it. Got a lot of good education on the
Where's, where's the
Good Florida.
Oh, it goes to Newland, okay.
Oh, yeah, no.
Maybe we're good for Newland.
I did get a scholarship, by the way. It's in the, from ICMA. So they paid for my, um, part of my hotel stay and travel and the, um, tuition to attend.
Nice.
Paid for all that. So it's, it's like it's gonna be a pretty big benefit for the city.
That's great. Um, yeah, I would say that, uh, that's, that's a big plus probably for, for sure. So that's good. Um, I would make sure, if you would please, to contact all your department folks before you go on Friday and make sure there's nothing lingering, nothing loose that needs to be done. So we don't get any feedback that, oh, we didn't get something done.
Oh, they all know.
I know. I know, yeah. Keep it up, yeah. That way, you know, I don't, you know, we don't have any, anybody that hasn't turned in what they needed to for us at times to do something for them, right? Not that we have that problem anymore much at all.
And I have perfect confidence in Matthew, Harlan, and Maryland and all their departments. Everything running.
I would agree with that.
I wish you, I wish the city attorney.
Well, yeah.
I have a city attorney.
We have confidence. Can you just what was you working on?
Department of Wine, so.
No, no, just my feeling.
What?
Department of Wine, so.
Me and Maryland are re-adding.
Oh, damn. What is this, that one? Gasoline truck. So, anything else for the, uh, City Administrator? If not, I would, uh, ask to be ready to close session based upon items posted.
We move that we go to the closed session during the meeting. The Board of Alderman may elect to go in the closed session on all the closed vote. And the purpose of such closed session, closed vote shall be, one, is provided for under Section six-one-zero-zero-two-one-one of the vice statutes of Missouri for legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. And nine, preparation, including any discussion or work product on behalf of public governmental body or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups.
Second.
At first and second to go to closed session based upon two lines. Red, uh,
Alvin Orsini?
Aye.
Alvin Hudson?
Four.
Alvin Wilkins?
Four.
Alvin Deckard?
Four.
Alvin Rogers?
Four.
Alvin Knightley?
Yeah. You, you, you know. All right. We're going to close session. We'll be back. Um, I'm hoping for a short bit.
I think we'll be
All right, we have, uh, returned back, uh, to open session. From closed session, during closed session, there were no votes taken. Um, no vote taken, we'll just come back into, uh, open session.
Make the motion that we adjourn.
There you go.
Second.
At first and second, that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time and help. Appreciate it.